Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 4th, 2015 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We do have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the February 18th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. Before we move on with the agenda, I want to recognize some visitors tonight. First of all, we have a Leadership Rutherford gentleman here, Mr. Mike Goodlow in the back. Mike, welcome. And we have two young men from Blackman High School who are attending Youth Leadership Rutherford, which I want to congratulate them. Come in Joshua Shepard and Takishi Taruuchi. If I did not mess up that name, too bad. I apologize if I did. But welcome, young men. I'm glad you're here, and we appreciate you participating in tonight. Thank you very much. We have four public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first of which is a rezoning application for approximately 15 acres located west of Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS-15 to Commercial Highway. James B. Haynes Family Real Estate Partnership is applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Our first public hearing, as you mentioned, is a rezoning application located to the west of Memorial Boulevard on the Haynes family property. The property is currently zoned RS-15, single-family residential district, and the applicants have requested for this 15 acres, which is shown in the orange on the map in front of you, to be rezoned to Commercial Highway CH. In their materials that they have submitted, they have represented that this is going to be, their intention is to develop this property with a grocery store-anchored, commercial, multi-tenant development. The frontage of this tract several years ago was rezoned to Commercial Highway from RS-15 in anticipation of the need for out parcels, since there was no room for out parcels on the Walmart site. So the frontage, as you can see on the map in front of you, is already zoned Commercial Highway, and this 15 acres that is proposed to be rezoned is directly to the west of that frontage that's already zoned Commercial Highway. To the south of the subject property is the Adams Place Assisted Living Facility, which is zoned PUD, Planned Unit District. To the south and southwest of the subject property is the Haynes Haven Single Family Subdivision, which is zoned RS-15. Directly to the north and to the west of the subject property is the remainder of the Haynes tract, which is zoned RS-15. And further to the west, about 800 to 900 feet away, also zoned RS-15, is the Ravenwood subdivision. Further to the north, zoned Commercial Highway, is the Bojangles and the post office right on the corner of Iron Gate and Memorial Boulevard. As I mentioned, the frontage of the Haynes tract is zoned Commercial Highway, but is still undeveloped at this time. Across the street, of course, you have the Walmart Supercenter that was opened in October of last year, and just to the north of the Walmart Supercenter, across from the Haynes property, is, are a number of lots that were previously used for residential purposes. Some are still being used for residential purposes, but those are zoned Commercial Highway as well, in anticipation of future commercial uses on the east side of Memorial Boulevard, north of Walmart. When the out parcels along the, or when the frontage of the Haynes tract was rezoned to Commercial Highway several years ago, we did see a transportation master plan that showed the proposed street network through the Haynes property, and that include, that did include a connection to the signalized intersection, which is now known as Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive. And so the primary access into the subject property would be via that signalized intersection at Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive, as it intersects with Memorial Boulevard. And we do anticipate a public street being constructed to the west and, or excuse me, to the north and northwest, all the way to Iron Gate Boulevard, at a time yet to be determined, in order to make a connection from Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive back up to Iron Gate Boulevard. This would assist motorists who, if they desired to frequent whatever, if the property is rezoned, frequent whatever commercial establishments might be constructed on the subject property, that they would not have to turn onto Memorial Boulevard only for a moment to exit Memorial Boulevard and go back onto the Haynes property. They would be able to, if they were coming from Ravenwood, for example, turn onto that proposed public street off of Iron Gate Boulevard and, and be able to access the proposed commercial development. We did conduct a neighborhood meeting that was hosted by the applicant at Northfield Elementary School last Monday, February 23rd. It was well-attended. There were about 40 people in attendance, including neighbors, members of the development team, and members of the city planning, engineering, and transportation staffs. There was some good discussion, and the meeting lasted about two hours. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, and then formulate a recommendation to forward on to the city council. Prior to conducting the public hearing, Mr. Brick Murphy, who is representing the applicant, does have a presentation that he would like to give to the Planning Commission. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at any time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Mr. Murphy.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, staff and the public. I'm excited to be here tonight, talking about this project. I believe we're going to get an announcement about the use, I just found that out, but we have to stick to the talking points, so I've got to be careful to stick to my script tonight. So, just once again, I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy &amp; Murphy. We represent the applicant, which is Franklin Land Associates and their leasing arm, GBT, which are both primarily the same company, but just different arms, excuse me. Mr. Blomley accurately described the property, but of course, I've got to go back through it, and I'm sorry, I'll try to keep it brief. The application is rezoned approximately 15 acres, Commercial Highway from RS-15. As you know, many people in the public don't, RS-15 is the base zoning for the, for the city, and so if you're not zoned something else, you're automatically zoned residential or RS-15. And the Haynes family, for many years, have farmed this property with the intent of making it commercial, and so there was no reason to have it zoned commercial before development came online. The proposed anchor tenant is an upstairs grocery store, new to Middle Tennessee, is under contract pending the successful completion of the zoning process. Mr. Jeff Pape with GBT or Franklin Land Associates will be talking a little bit more about them. I don't have the script, so I need to make sure that I keep it at that. And the center will also offer additional space for other tenants. And the, the property in question is behind, as Mr. Blomley said, the approximately 300-foot deep Commercial Highway zoned strip along Memorial. It was zoned about a year and a half ago, two years ago, before you. It's adjacent to Adams Place. We had meetings with representatives there, Mr. Adam Coggins, Mr. Buckley Winfrey. The discussions went well. We want to be very sensitive to our neighbors, particularly a use that's such a benefit to our community. It's across from the existing Walmart, and, you know, much other commercial development along 231 Memorial Boulevard. One thing to note is in what I would say is the back of the property, is the 231 West Basin, which was described and identified in 1995 as this property's surrounding properties were beginning to be developed. The Hayneses were having problems with development pushing water onto their property into this area that's a natural low spot, and rather than be reactive, the city, the Adams family, the Waldrons, the Hayneses, and, and some other interested parties got together and decided, in the future, if Haynes property goes commercial, if we develop outer subdivisions, if Adams Place is put in place, where are we going to put the water? And so rather than trying to fix it on the tail end, they were proactive. And this study, which was conducted by Aubrey Floy, which is a noted hydrologist, said, where is the post-development stormwater going to go? And they identified a basin for it to, to go to, which is about 17 acres, and it is behind the property in question. And when I mean behind, if you're facing the property from Memorial Boulevard, you would see hypothetically, the road that would come out at the intersection of where Walmart is, the same signalization, then the subject property, and I'll show you a map in a second, and then the drainage basin will be behind that, 17 acres. And it has been designed to hold the volume for all the uses that I talked about, including the development of the entire Haynes tract, which is rather large and still has a good bit of undeveloped property at this time. The pond will abut the existing Haynes Haven and Ravenwood subdivisions, and I think it's about time to put up a map and get y'all oriented where it is. See if y'all can see that. Not very well. Well, if you can sort of see, and not very well unfortunately, you can see the red there, and I wish I had a laser pointer, but the red area right there is the Commercial Highway that is already zoned. Those are three of the out parcels that were intended, that were rezoned about two years ago, and, and that rezoning, that Commercial Highway stretches up Memorial Boulevard. And if you'll see, the, the white, that's Memorial, and then as you go towards your left, if I have a better term, you'll see that there's a road that cuts, that cuts kind of a little J, upside-down J, and the development in question is the white area, and the area in yellow would be the, the building envelopes. And maybe in a few minutes, we'll get out some big boards and help y'all a little bit better.
Slide preview mode right here. Put it on the...
Okay. Sorry, I'm, I'm, yeah, can we zoom in?
I'm challenged too, but I know that you can make it bigger because it's on slide preview mode right here. There you go. Well?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That was, that's much better. If you'll see in the back, obviously, I'm not the technical person at our firm, so that's what Mr. Goodman is for, and a lot of other things. If you'll see in the back, there's kind of a white area that is, that is in front of the existing single-family subdivisions of Haynes Haven and Ravenwood. And, and that is the approximate area that this drainage basin will be. The intent is that the basin will back up to the single-family subdivisions and will not only serve as, as stormwater management and help clean the water before it goes into the drainage system, it will also serve as a buffer. And I'll flip to my next slide here. Will also serve as a buffer for the neighboring property owners, the best buffer being distance. Our esteemed former planning director would always question my clients, and I would always say, what's the best buffer? And they would throw out various things, and the answer was always distance. And a 17-acre drainage basin is a lot of distance for all the surrounding property owners, even the, the ones in Haynes Haven who are the closest will still have quite a bit of distance between the rear property line in, in red and, and the, the property proposed to be developed. And you'll see in the orange is where the, the building envelope is intended to be. A little bit about GBT, which is the leasing arm of, of the company. They're a national commercial developer. They're headquartered in Franklin, Tennessee. They're nationally known for quality and sophistication for their development, developments. And my firm has worked for decades with Mr. George Tomlin, their president, and various members of, of their company. It's gotten to be quite large. Actually, first met George when I was about 13, and we were riding horses, and I remarked on what a beautiful horse he had, but he's also got a wonderful firm. So, so we've had a longstanding relationship, and based on my experience working with them, not only here, but in other places, and I've worked with many developers, I can attest that they're one of the best in the business. They have the financial capability, they have the staff, they have the expertise, and they have the confidence of, of, of the commercial and retail users to bring the best that we can offer to bear. And the good thing is they're right up the street, so we're not having a developer who's nationally recognized but is headquartered out of New York, there in Franklin, so they're practically in our backyard. So we've got a, got a first-class development company, basically, that's our neighbor. So, yeah, GBT's proven track record allows them to bring commercial tenants like the one in question to Murfreesboro because of their ability to produce on-time, attractive, well-designed, and well-maintained projects. You know, a desirable anchor tenant like we have for this project, they're not easy to come by. And as I go around and talk to people in Nashville, Atlanta, various places, and meet people in the development community, they always want to know, are there spots near the interstate? And, and one of the things that I've always been very adamant about is, you don't have to be near the interstate in Murfreesboro. We can support users like this strictly on our own. We don't need, and we, we love for people to come here and shop, obviously, but we don't necessarily have to have that. And they're taking a gamble on the north side, but it's a gamble we know that will be successful because of the ability economically and otherwise for our community to support a high-end grocery store. And so they've brought what we've been seeking for many years, and if you'll notice, Facebook is, is, is full of discussion about who the, the tenant is going to be, and has been trying to lure somebody like this to Murfreesboro for years, so I'm very excited about it. One of the questions that came up at the neighborhood meeting was, well, what about the other smaller spaces in the, in the commercial development that's proposed? You get your anchor tenant, but what are we going to have in the, in the adjoining units? And the answer to that is, GBT's track record will pull tenants to the site. The fact of the matter is, Memorial is a very, a very well-built, but very well-traveled road. It's a major arterial, and these, these, I would say, smaller, but still upscale businesses follow tenants like this, this grocer. They follow tenants like Walmart, and the more development that there is, the more attractive it becomes. And if, if GBT is able to get this rezoned, then they'll be able to fill the spaces, I feel certain. Jeff Pape with GBT is here to tell you a little bit more about his company. I think it's important for y'all to get a little context about who they are and what they do. Then I'll be back up to talk a little bit more about the Hayneses, and then Mr. Huddleston will close, close out the presentation with some specifics. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brick. Go to the next slide here. Good evening. My name is Jeff Pape with GBT Realty Corporation. Appreciate y'all coming out in this terrible weather tonight to have the public hearing. Just, I'll try to go quick so we can get out of here before things turn to freezing rain tonight, and won't duplicate too much of what Brick already said. GBT Realty Corporation is a privately-held company founded by George Tomlin back in 1987. Local company, George grew up in Franklin, started the company there. We're actually now based in Brentwood. In the la, since 2008, we've developed roughly 5 million square feet of retail development throughout the United States. That represents roughly $1 billion in investment-grade projects that we've completed. We are also a developer where we do develop all over the country, and in some areas, we do sell what we develop, but we also maintain a strong portfolio, and the majority of what we develop in Tennessee is something, are projects that we hold on to long-term in our portfolio. This project, Grocery Anchored Shopping Center, is something that is absolutely intended to be held in our portfolio long-term. So we are a developer who develops locally and plans on continuing to maintain it. We're not a developer that plans on selling and moving on for this particular asset. We have a relationship with all the major national retailers. We're fortunate with that. We've stayed strong through very difficult economic times, so there's no concern about us not being able to complete the project. We've actually grown since 2008 significantly, our company, and that's, that's a testament to the company that George Tomlin has built. Some of the things that we've done over the years in the area, the shops at Brentwood Hills, which is the Target Anchored Shopping Center in Brentwood, and these are just examples of the types of projects we've done locally to give you a feel for the quality. Of course, the Kroger right up the road from, from the parcel we're talking about now. Now, that was done 20 years ago. Kroger actually owned their own parcel there, so, so we only own a small portion of that, and Kroger controls the rest of it. The Academy Sports and Outdoors that was recently developed up in Smyrna, that, that was something that is only a couple of years, about two years old now, that we developed. Pear Tree Village in Brentwood, and there's a slide that, that we forgot to put in here. We also developed the Publix Anchored Shopping Center at Concord in Owensville Pike, which is not too far over in Williamson County, and that's another good example of the quality development that we do. Just, Brick talked a little bit about the zoning request. You know, some of the things that are required is the type D buffer that'll protect the, the property, the development from the surrounding residential. Some things that we've agreed to do that are beyond the standards of the zoning code. The zoning code, I think, calls for 0.5-foot candles at property lines for lighting levels. We always do 0-foot candles at the light, at the property lines, just to make sure we're not imposing on, on our neighbors. An important point that came up in the neighborhood meeting was the detention area in the back, which Brick already talked about a little bit, and Bill Huddleston will actually talk a little more about it. But there will be a reciprocal easement agreement placed on the property that will be a deed restriction that will designate that area as a detention area. The exact boundaries of it are yet to be determined. The engineering, the final engineering design will help determine that, but that will be set aside as a drainage area, as a deed restriction to the property. So I think that's important. That REA will also contain some use restrictions that Brick is going to talk about a little more later, so I won't get into that right now. The last key point that I'll make before I step down and let Brick come back up here, as Brick mentioned, we already have an anchor tenant with a signed lease. We're not here asking for rezoning in the hopes that we can bring a project here. We have a commitment from a great anchor tenant. Part of that lease is a confidentiality statement. We are not allowed to use their name in any public settings without getting their written permission. The good news is, after hounding them for weeks and weeks, I got their permission today to announce the name. They did give me a written statement, so I'm going to be able to announce the name and read their written statement that they gave me, but at least the name will be out there. The retailer that we're bringing to Middle Tennessee, and it will be one of their first locations here, is Sprouts Farmers Market. Wonderful. We, we feel the same way. They're, they're a wonderful tenant. We are doing several deals with them right now. I'll read the statement, and you guys can certainly find out more about them on, on the internet. But the statement they provided is, "Sprouts Farmers Market is a healthy grocery store offering fresh, natural, and organic foods at great prices. We offer a complete shopping experience that includes fresh produce, bulk foods, vitamins and supplements, packaged groceries, meat and seafood, baked goods, dairy products, frozen foods, natural body care, and household items catering to the consumer's growing interest in health and wellness. Headquartered in Phoenix, Arizona, Sprouts employs more than 18,000 team members in 12 states. For more information, you can visit sprouts.com or @sproutsSFM on Twitter." As I said, we have several deals going on with Sprouts right now. We helped bring their first few locations into Alabama. They're, they're a wonderful tenant. We're excited to have them coming into the market, and we think they're a great use to help draw other quality tenants into this development. With that, I will turn it back over to Brick and let him continue with the presentation. Of course, I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
I have to compliment Mr. Tom Davis. He's one of the people who guessed properly, and I could not divulge one way or the other, but he said if it was the Sprouts, that he would be excited about it. And I said, I, that I would be excited no matter who came, and could not state anything further. So, one thing to point out is, they came to Murfreesboro first. There's not one in Franklin, there's not one in Brentwood, there's not one in Nashville. We're the first in the market, and I think that's a testament to our community.
The closest is in Huntsville, correct? And that's not even open yet?
As Mr. Davis said, the closest is in Huntsville, and it's not even open yet. So, he, he obviously knows more about Sprouts than, than I do, in terms of their geographic locations, but he's quite the sleuth, I must say. I just wanted to point that out. And just a little bit about the Haynes family. For those of you who don't know them, this farm has been in their family for four generations. It's in a, a family partnership. They're in no hurry to sell. They don't have a note. They're waiting for the right users, and they have always been and always will be sensitive to their neighbors. They've owned this piece of property for over 100 years, and they have sold tracks off, but primarily what they do are, are ground leases, but if the right user comes along, they'll sell. But they're, but they've had many people come that they say were not interested, and they've had the commercial zoning on Memorial for two years now, and nothing's there because nothing appropriate has come by and knocked on their door. And so the Haynes family themselves have a proven track record of being respectful to their neighbors, wanting aesthetically pleasing uses, quality uses that will look nice, not only on ribbon-cutting day, but 10, 15, 20 years from now. And they have developed from Sportscom to Rite Aid, the Franklin Synergy Bank there is one of their developments. It's a, a ground lease. Also, the Hall Robb Shopping Center, where Papa Murphy's is, which is probably the nicest commercial center on, on the Memorial corridor. So they are committed to the community not to bring things that are going to be objectionable because it's a bad reflection on their family, and they have the luxury of waiting because they're not beholden to a bank or investors or someone to, to turn the property. One thing to mention, during contract negotiations, which I was part of, all parties were insisting on there being restrictive covenants. And when I mean by all parties, the tenant, which you now know as Sprouts, the Haynes family, as well as the developer. And so all of them wanted to place restrictions for their own protection, for their own property value. And, and I'll go through a couple of those. If I went through the entire list, Chairman Lamb would cut my mic off and send me home, so I'll just go through those very quickly. But I think these are things that nobody wants to see out there and are not appropriate for, for that corridor, and particularly for their plan of creating a high-end retail corridor on Memorial. And so they will not be allowed discount dollar stores such as Dollar Tree or Family Dollar, uses that cause unreasonable noise, and what we're talking about is outside speakers, those sorts of things that would be obtrusive to the neighbors, you know... to the neighbors, you know, that sort of thing. Blaring music, manufacturing facilities of any sort, regardless of whether or not they're allowed in the zoning classification, car dealerships, vehicle and boat rental facilities, car washes, those have a place, but this isn't the place for them. Tire stores, car repair shops, automobile service stations, gas stations, secondhand thrift stores, your Goodwills, your Salvation Armies, which do have a place in the community, but not here. Overstocked or liquidation outlets, carnivals, laser tag, Chuck E. Cheese's, you know, arcades, those sorts of things that are great uses, but are not really appropriate for, for this site. Any adult-oriented businesses, period. You know, you can have a laundry list of those things, but, but, but they're not going to be allowed. Funeral parlors, gun ranges, pawn shops, hotels. I'm getting close. And, and there are a number of other things, but I thought I would point out some of the most objectionable uses to people, things that people are afraid of because sometimes they're not maintained and sometimes they drive traffic that just isn't appropriate for this. And the good thing about it is you've got the Haynes family who will have the ability to enforce them. You have the developer who will own the property, who will have the ability to enforce it on several of the Haynes out parcels. And then the tenant will be able, through its lease, to say, you know, a neighboring tenant, you can't do this, and, and file suit as well. So, you've got competing interests, but they're all aligned. So, if we've got one bad actor, there is a mechanism for enforcement. So, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out on this rainy night, which is going to be a snowy night if I don't get off the mic. We've had an overwhelmingly positive feedback from the public. Was at the Hart Ball last weekend and it's all anybody wanted to talk about. And I've just had to nicely say, I can't tell you, but you'll be excited. We reached out to a number of neighbors that had concerns at the neighborhood meeting. I called them today, the ones I could reach. I spoke to, Mr. Davis was one of them. And, and, and that's what we always do, just to make sure there's nothing that we're missing, anything that's come up last minute that we might be able to help with. So, we respectfully ask for you to vote in favor of the project and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm going to hand the presentation over to Mr. Huddleston. He's always much briefer than I and we appreciate him.
Engineers instead of lawyers. Gotcha.
Thank you. I'll definitely be brief, but I appreciate it, Brick. Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering here in Murfreesboro, and I'm proud to be part of the design team for this exciting project. I don't know whether to ask Mr. Murphy or Mr. Davis right-clicking here.
Yeah.
It's me.
Sit down.
I just knew it wasn't.
Turn it on. Here we go.
Mr. Young, would you go down to help him, please?
We've got an engineer and a lawyer trying to figure out, just get it on the screen. Okay. Yes. The great Oz has to put it back up there, so.
You have an engineer and a lawyer and a planner who's at the rescue.
Well, that, that's easily how it goes.
Go on, which?
Yeah, right with it, yeah.
Okay. There are four things I want to touch on briefly. Some of them have been mentioned already, but it's the four things that come up on just about every project we propose rezoning on and quite appropriately, they were asked about during the neighborhood meeting and I'd like to touch on them right now. The first is drainage. As discussed, there's a significant drainage basin in the back of this project. And what, what I want to do is show you a board. Brick had the slide up earlier, but I'm not sure you could see it too well. Put it in front of Mr. Lewis there so the Planning Commission can see it. What that shows is the proposed development that we're asking for the zoning for, and then behind it shows the very significant drainage basin, which was designed by Mr. Aubrey Fly back in 1995. And you'll see, you'll see that very large basin in the back that ensures that no development will abut up against Haynes Haven or Ravenwood. What this basin is designed to do is to hold the water that gets to it. That, that 231 Drainage Basin Study looked at both the east side and the west side of Memorial Boulevard. The idea is that as we develop this acreage on the Haynes side of Memorial Boulevard, we will be excavating land out of the basin to offset any impact that we might have. So, in other words, for every acre of commercial highway that's developed on the Haynes farm, we'll be taking out 313 cubic yards of material from this basin to assure, ensure that it will not impact any neighbors. As part of that study, 20-
Excuse me a minute. TV rooms, put the camera on the board that's being done under the TV room.
Is that 313 cubic yards per acre? Is that what you said?
313 cubic yards is excavated for each acre of development to commercial highway.
Back row, back row, where hopefully they can. Get the camera on the table, please, in front of the public.
Turn it the wrong way.
The other thing that was done with that study, great, that's great. That shows it, how big it is. The other thing that was done with that study and the construction was actually completed by the city 15 to 20 years ago. The city actually rebuilt Independence Way, which is just west of this basin. They built it as an inverted crown. You know, most roads have a crown like that. This road was rebuilt to have an inverted crown, so if, under some sort of catastrophic event, this basin filled up, the water would go down Independence Way before, again, before it impacted any neighbors. Not only that, inverted crown would, would be available, but there is a pipe, a large pipe under Independence Way that could drain the water even before it got to the inverted crown. Another thing that, that we have to do now that hasn't been in place before, but under the city's regulations, once we develop, we have to file a maintenance agreement with the city to ensure that this drainage basin will be maintained. So, trash will be cleaned out periodically. It will be mowed periodically and that agreement has to be spelled out and planning and engineering won't give us our building permit until we spell that out and have that agreement with the city. All right? We can do away with that board and hopefully come to, back to the slide I have on the screen here. Because the second thing I wanted to touch on briefly is traffic. We always hear about traffic. With the rezoning of the out parcels out front, when we, when we came to y'all two years ago, we worked with staff very diligently before that rezoning effort to make sure that we understood and that staff understood the master roadway plan that would be followed for the development of the Haynes property. The idea was, and I don't know if you can see it on the, on the screen, but there's some dashed outlines of roadways that are to be developed on this property. And what that does is provide major connect, multiple connections to the major arterial being Memorial Boulevard. It's a five-lane major arterial and planning staff wanted to make sure that developing the entire Haynes farm would follow this design that would provide multiple connections to Memorial Boulevard at signalized locations. So, this, this location that we're looking at tonight is on the southern part of the farm. Our direct access will tie to the Lieutenant McBride Street that was developed with Walmart and there is a signal there. That provides good spacing with the signal to the south at Airport Road. It also provides good spacing to the north to a potential signal at Irongate Boulevard, where Irongate's already been built to Memorial Boulevard, and that provides good spacing to the next signal north, which is Haynes Drive. Between the Lieutenant McBride Street and the Irongate, there's another signalization possibility, which would be the third connection to Memorial Boulevard that has been planned out for this farm. Another thing to look at in regards to traffic, I'm sorry, Brick, we're going to put this one back up. There's a truck turnaround in back for this development and the way this truck turnaround is designed, the trucks will have to use the Lieutenant McBride signalized access and come to the north of the buildings to get to the turnaround and then it'll, it'll back into the dock in back there. So, what that means is that trucks will not be using the access drives that are closer to the residential development. So, we're keeping the trucks away by requiring them to use that turnaround and it keeps them away from the residential development that's there. Also, as you know, if we're successful here, and we hope we are tonight, we'll, we'll go to city council for a public hearing and two readings for the rezoning. Then we will prepare our detailed site plans and come back to you to make sure that we're following our commitments that we're making tonight and also following the rules that we have to with the city of Murfreesboro. One of the things we'll look at at that point are the turn lanes that, that we will need to have for our side of Lieutenant McBride Street as it ties into that signal on, on Memorial Boulevard. Third thing I want to mention is the buffering. As you know, type D buffering is required for this type of development between our development and the single-family residential to the south. What we want to do is try to maintain the trees that are there. There are some trees, as you can see from the aerial, that are already located there. We will enhance that tree area and provide additional trees that we will be providing the type D buffer for this project. Also, as Brick mentioned, we have great distance for buffering caused by this, by the detention basin between our development and the single-family homes. Last thing I want to mention is lighting. Lighting is, is another concern for this type of development, but as you know, the city of Murfreesboro requires that we cannot have more than half a foot candle of spillover over property lines. I was very impressed when Jeff told me a couple of days ago that they don't even want any light spilling over property lines. That's quite a commitment that his company is making. With that, I and the rest of the team will be available for any questions either now or after the public hearing. Thanks, Brick.
Okay. Sure there will be questions. Don't know if we need them now or not. See if I have any questions they'd like to bring up right now before we open the public hearing. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Please hang tight. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by here. When we open the public hearing, you'll be invited to come to the microphone to speak, either for or against a proposal. Please make all your comments to the Planning Commission, if you would, hold them to no more than three minutes. State your name and give your address when you come forward. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions and we'll try to get those answered after the Planning Commission, after the public hearing is finished. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hello, my name is Lyle Lynch and I live at 295 Freedom Court in the Haynes Haven Development. My lot is, let's see, there's across the street, there's some lots and then the street and there's my house. I'm particularly concerned about this piece of property because the maps you see don't show the topography. As I mentioned, this is a low area and my house is on a rise, so I have a, a view toward My mom lives a couple doors down, on the same side of the street. She's not here today, but I'm kind of representing her too with these thoughts and comments. Didn't bring a note. I thought I was too old to bring a note from mom, so I'll speak without that. We received a letter in mid-February mentioning that they want to rezone the property, the Haynes Farm, from RS15 to CH, and that raised a lot of flags because, again, I have a view of the property. Noise can travel very easy across there. And so, my initial reaction was quite a bit of concern and, of course, this notification mentioned a neighborhood meeting that occurred on February 23rd at a school there in the neighborhood. My concerns that I brought up at the meeting were traffic flow, how that would impact our neighborhood, noise, if we would have noise coming into the neighborhood, lighting, if we would have lighting spilling over from the development into our residential areas. Views, we just didn't want to look at the back of a, of a store, a loading dock. Drainage was a concern and buffering is a concern. We met with Murfreesboro Planning Department staff. Presentation was made by the project team and the meeting went, according to my watch, a little longer than two hours. It was pretty extensive for a neighborhood meeting. During that time, my concerns were, that I just mentioned, were all specifically addressed and I, leaving no concerns. We, of specific importance was the idea of buffering. And we have, as they mentioned, there's a 17 acres of drainage that separates all of the objectionable functions now and in the future as this property develops from the neighbors on my street and some adjacent streets. I'm looking forward to getting something within almost walking range there that we've been needing on that end of town, which is some high-end retail. The hope is that this will bring more of the same if we can see some success here. And due to the lack of high-end retail in the area, I would think it would have a lot of success. It's not really an issue for y'all, I guess, but I think I left a little time on my three minutes, Mr. Lamb.
You did well, Mr. Lynch. Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Davis, I presume?
Oh, yeah. I'm actually here being positive for a change. Isn't that a concept? I'm Tom Davis. I live at 502 Blue Bell in Palmer Heights. I am the media chair for the North Murfreesboro Alliance. I am not here speaking for the alliance tonight, but what I'm saying tonight is the same thing that I'm discussing with everybody that contacts me about, about this development. So, that may be vague. It's one of those good news, bad news situations, so I'll give you my bad comments first is I've been monitoring the city's website for a while. It took them forever to put Mr. Shacklet on their website as city council. There's no contact information for you people directly on the city website. I find that egregious. If you drill down and drill down and drill down, it seems as though they want us to contact Mr. Whitaker or his staff to contact y'all. In my Navy career, I used to work for a man named Ben Montoya. Admiral Ben, who became the chief of civil engineers and then went on to a great career with PG&E in California, always used to say, "Don't waste your time talking to midgets." And I'm not implying, Mr. Whitaker, that your staff are midgets, but Mr. Lamb, your office is a mile and a half from me. If I want to talk to you and I can't get you on the phone, I'm going to drive up there. I highly recommend that you get direct contact information for the Planning Commission on the city website.
Thank you.
Okay, that being done, I love this. This is great. We've been talking for a long time about not doing blind rezonings, actually having somebody come up and say, "I want this site. I want to do something here. I want to develop it and this is a concept of what I want to do." This is what we've been asking for, for four years now in my development. I think that's wonderful. I really do. I'm excited about Sprouts. If you're not familiar with it, my, my daughter lives in Corpus Christi, Texas, along with my grandchildren. I've been in Sprouts 50 times. It's everything, well, 90% maybe, of what Whole Foods offers without the snooty, yuppie attitude. Well, I'm a retired naval officer. I've traveled all over the country. I was developing properties for a trucking company. I was developing properties for a trucking company. There's three people I don't like. I don't like Walmart. I don't like Starbucks, and I don't like Whole Foods, and I don't make any bones about it. It's a great store with great people, a great product, a great attitude. I'll be there at least once a week when they open. I promise that. Two questions I have is how much of the drainage is going to be developed with this initial development? And as we talked about at the neighborhood meeting, nothing you've talked about as being in there exceeds commercial fringe zoning. Why aren't we asking for commercial fringe instead of commercial highway? Again, I used to do property development for a trucking company. I understand you want to get the most you can get, but if you want to kind of get the neighborhood to buy into it, if you only need commercial fringe, let's buy off on commercial fringe. I hear you say that there's a couple of high-end restaurants going to go in there. Do you think you might could top Mitchell of five senses to move over there from the Kroger? Never mind. It's the best restaurant in Nashville metro area, as far as I'm concerned. That's all I have to say. This is how we've been asking for years to have it done, have somebody come in. This is an idea of what we want to do. This is how we want to develop it. Now let's ask for our rezoning. And with the people that are going in there, and I've researched GBT, the people that are going to be doing it, I'm all in favor of it. Let's rock and roll. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I said something positive, didn't I?
Yeah, and thank you for your technical help earlier, too. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Brooke LaRache, and my address is 2838 Cherry Blossom Lane. I am here tonight speaking as a wife and a mother and a cook. I spend a lot of my time at the grocery store and a lot of my time cooking, and I can't tell you how excited I am for the opportunity to have a high-end grocery store with organic foods to feed my children. I'm excited for it to be on the north end of town. If it were going to be in the avenue area, I would visit it maybe once a month, but with it being on the north end of town, I will frequent it probably twice a week. I just recently moved from one neighborhood in the north area of town to another neighborhood in the north area of town. It's an area of town that we plan on staying in, and I look forward to the growth that will happen in this Haynes development. I think the planning has been, I've been very impressed in here tonight, listening to all the work that's gone into it. It's been well-thought-out, and I'm just very excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening, Chairman Lamb and the rest of the commission. My name is Justin Burris, and I am a neighbor at 2911 Regency Park Drive. I just wanted to express my excitement about the now-announced Sprout neighborhood market hopefully coming to our area. You know, I have had some concerns in the past about, you know, development and that sort of thing in the area, and I understand the planning commission is, you know, primarily charged with, you know, analyzing a lot of the technical aspects of it, drainage, that sort of thing, which, you know, based on Brick, Mr. Huddleston's presentation, I was actually pretty comfortable with and, you know, excited to see the buffering and that sort of thing there. But again, I just wanted to express my excitement. I also wanted to speak on behalf of my lovely wife who's at home right now. She always gets excited every time she gets to go to Nashville because she gets to go to a high-end grocer up there, and usually, for better or worse, ends up taking the car with the bigger trunk space. So we're hopefully excited to be able to spend that money here locally, keep it in the community where we've been, you know, born and raised. So anyway, I won't take up any more of your time, but again, I appreciate y'all's consideration on this project, and I'm very excited to hopefully see it move forward. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Anybody else?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Ashley Sterns. I reside at 1181 Bayard Avenue, approximately three miles from the proposed rezoning, and I am here tonight to express my full support of this project. I have been very impressed with the efforts and the level of thought that have went into the planning, and I am so excited to be able to travel just right down the road to such a wonderful establishment. Thank you so much for the time and everything that all of you do to make our community great.
Thank you, Ms. Sterns. Last call. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Questions? I think there were a few questions. Probably Mr. Huddleston might, after he confers with the owner there. There's questions I think Mr. Davis had pertaining to the drainage and the zoning.
Yes, sir. We're going to, as I said, we'll be digging out for every acre of commercial development. We have to dig out 313 cubic yards of material out of the basin, so we'll be digging out for the six acres for this development, and also we'll be digging out probably another three to five acres for the Haynes Out Parcels, and it's a phased digging out, and so that's probably how much we'll be digging out at this point. Probably six plus, probably nine to 12, something like that.
Okay.
And Jeff, you want to address the commercial highway?
Relative to the question about the commercial fringe versus commercial highway, we did take a hard look at those regulations, and really with the type of development that's proposed, we feel that the commercial highway is the most appropriate. There are some guidelines within commercial fringe that would make it extremely difficult, particularly to some additional requirements for the rear areas of a commercial fringe property. And with the buffers and everything that are provided, we feel like the commercial highway is what's necessary here, and it also fits with the corridor and what's been going on through there. So that's, we did take a look at it, but it's just something that we didn't feel we could switch to at this point.
Okay. Jeff, when you were up earlier, did you give the operating hours for Sprouts?
The operating hours for Sprouts are 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM are their operating hours.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Whitaker, I don't know, or Mr. Blomley, did anybody else have other questions that you needed to address?
I believe that those were the only questions that I heard from Chairman Lamb.
Mr. Davis had questions about contacting the planning commission members. It's got to be on there somewhere, Mr. Davis, because everybody else, Mr. Burris, I communicated with him today. Where'd you get my email address, Mr. Burris?
I actually got it from my wife. I think it was on the website.
It's on there somewhere, but if you'll...
I spent about 10 minutes, and the only thing it does is direct you to contact the planning department to contact...
That's the way, that's the way most of us would like to have it, but I think we're on there, though. If you'll get with one of them after the meeting, I'm sure they'll get you hooked up.
Chairman Lamb, where I'm aware of that the contact information for the planning commissioners is located is in the zoning ordinance, which is available for download on the city's website, and one of the first few pages of the zoning ordinance is the contact information for the city council, planning commission, and board of zoning appeals. But so I know it's on there, but it may not be the easiest to locate.
Chairman...
I'd rather not. We've already closed the public hearing.
We have the PDF to get to that.
Please...
If I go and it says planning commission, it tells me who the members are.
Please get with them on that, okay? Thank you.
Chairman, I'll be happy to get with our IT department tomorrow and see if we can't put some links. We can put some links that would direct and make it easier to navigate.
That'd be good.
I'll be happy to take care of that.
And you're welcome to come in my office any time, so.
I've been scrolling through the Murfreesboro website. He made that comment, and I see that where it used to be, as far as the council members are concerned, it's no longer there, so we do need to address that. Bill Shackleton's still not listed, and he's correct on that, so we'll get that corrected tomorrow.
Okay, good. Any other questions for members of the planning commission? Mr. Young?
You ready for the motion?
I am, if you are.
Move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, very good presentation, and particularly want to thank Mr. Haynes there. Mr. Haynes has held out and looked for a responsible way to develop his property that would be an asset to North Murfreesboro, and as a property owner in North Murfreesboro, I appreciate that myself, so thank you, Mr. Haynes. The next public hearing is a rezoning application for approximately 3.2 acres to be rezoned from RS-10 to RS-12, 0.28 acres to be rezoned from RS-10 to RS-15, 6.75 acres to be rezoned from RS-12 to RS-10, 3.04 acres to be rezoned from RS-12 to RS-15, I presume that is. It says 115. And unless y'all come up with a new classification there, Mr. Whitaker, I'll read that in as RS-15.
That's correct.
And 1.06 acres to be rezoned from RS-15 to RS-12, located in Salem Creek subdivision south of New Salem Highway. Salem Creek Partnership is the developer. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb, and you were correct, that is a typo, that should be RS-15. The request comes to you today from Mr. David Alcorn of Salem Creek Partnership. Mr. Alcorn is the primary developer, or one of the primary developers of the Salem Creek subdivision. This first came to our attention, oh, about a month ago, when Mr. Alcorn was getting ready to record the, or getting ready the documents to record in the near future, the next section of Salem Creek, and it was noticed that the zoning boundary does not follow the property lines for the proposed lots in the next section. Well, that poses some issues more practical than anything else in that different zoning classifications have different setback requirements, different maximum lot coverage requirements, and so for the purposes of enforcement, you know, when a part of a side lot line for a lot has a 10-foot setback and the other part of it has a 12-and-a-half-foot setback, what do you use? So Mr. Whitaker met with Mr. Alcorn and tasked Mr. Alcorn to come back with a rezoning request, to look at his development comprehensively and see where those zoning lines needed to be tweaked. And so Mr. Alcorn has taken a look at his current master plan for the development and seen some areas that need to be, some zoning boundaries that need to be tweaked, not only for the existing subdivisions that are already plotted, but for the future subdivisions. And bear in mind, when this property was annexed back in 2003, the concept master plan that was used for the subdivision layout at that time was kind of the best guess on how it would be developed without having done any detailed civil engineering on the project. That was the concept plan that was put together for the annexation and the zoning. Since that time, the master plan has been fine-tuned, and so you can see on the exhibit in front of you that the zoning changes slightly modify the zoning boundary from some of the existing lots as well as some of the future sections. With that being said, the existing zoning classifications in the property, RS-10, RS-12, and RS-15, have not changed. It's just basically slightly shifting around those zoning classifications so that you end up with just different amounts of RS-10, RS-12, and RS-15. In some areas, you gain more RS-10; in other areas, you gain more RS-15. So the, it's more of a cleaning up of the lot lines. And now, Mr. Smotherman, at the day meeting, did ask for a map of the existing zoning, so I have that for you here as well. This is the existing zoning map, where you can see the existing zoning lines, and you can see as you follow my cursor, or my hand, if you will, you can see how that existing zoning boundary crisscrosses some of those rear lot lines. And so what this request would do for the existing lots would actually bring that zoning boundary following those rear lot lines, so all of those existing lots would be in one zoning classification or the other, and not both. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. David Alcorn is present, if you have any questions for him.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Pretty much housekeeping, you're right, Mr. Young. If there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. One at a time, please. Anybody? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion when approved, subject to staff comment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three is the Agro Park Drive right-of-way abandonment request for 0.05 acres of right-of-way located south of John Rice Boulevard. TDK Construction is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Subject property, as you can see on the map in front of you, is a small section of the Agro Park Drive right-of-way, just to the south of John R. Rice Boulevard. It is directly adjacent to the tract that was approved in 2014 for the Orchard Grove Apartment Complex, which is now known as Vintage Blackman. TDK Construction is one of the developers of this apartment complex, and with this stub of right-of-way, it creates a kind of an awkward front lot line, and with front lot lines, the front setback, the corresponding front setback will follow the shape of the front lot line. And so Mr. Bradley with TDK Construction has requested that this small area of right-of-way of Agro Park Drive be abandoned. And the reason why this section of Agro Park Drive, or why this small area of Agro Park Drive was recorded was for the potential extension of a public street to the west through the tract where the Vintage Blackman Apartment Complex is proposed to be developed. However, since it is going to be developed with an apartment complex as opposed to a subdivision with a need for a public street, there's really no need for that small area of right-of-way to remain, and so staff is in concurrence with the applicant's request to abandon this section of right-of-way, subject to the following conditions. And before I read those conditions, I will mention that you do have a right-of-way study that was conducted by Mr. Ornellus and included in your packets that shows that this right-of-way abandonment can be affected relatively easily. Staff recommends the following conditions of approval. A 30-foot water and sewer easement centered over the existing water and sewer mains must be retained prior to the abandonment of the right-of-way. Number two, the applicant must provide a legal description, an exhibit, and any other documentation necessary for the preparation of the required legal documents. And number three, all legal documents are subject to the approval of the city attorney. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, after which it will need to discuss the matter and decide whether or not to abandon the excess right-of-way. If the request is approved, then it will be forwarded on to the city council for ratification of the planning commission's action. And I believe that Mr. Huddleston is here tonight, representing Mr. Bradley of TDK Construction, if you have any questions for him. He's the design engineer on the project.
Any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. If no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for public, subject to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Good evening, Mr. Huddleston. The final public hearing today is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding minimum space required between buildings and parking and/or access drives in the Gateway Design Overlay District required base of building landscaping and other related sections. The planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This is an applicant, or this is, excuse me, a proposed amendment today that the planning staff brings to you, which is something that we feel can help to streamline the process and eliminate a hurdle and actually make some common sense revisions to our zoning ordinance that will be, in our opinion, user-friendly. As you are well aware, after having looked at many, many Gateway Design Overlay District items, there's a minimum separation requirement from the building to parking indoor access drives of seven feet on lots of less than one and a half acres or 10 feet on lots of one and a half acres or greater. Well, there are many different types of uses where the use won't function without a specific building element that causes there to be zero separation, but there's no exception for that, for those building elements in our zoning regulations, so that anytime there is a use such as a restaurant with a drive-through... there is a use such as a restaurant with a drive-through, a bank with a drive-through, a car dealership with vehicular access doors to get inside the building, those uses have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and spend another month of their time going through an extra board in order to get a variance to this requirement. When we as staff feel that these are necessary elements of the building without which they could function, or without which they could not function, and the Board of Zoning Appeals, to my recollection, has never turned down one of these variances, and I don't believe the planning commission has ever recommended that someone not proceed to the Board of Zoning Appeals with one of these types of variances. So the planning staff brings before you today an amendment to the zoning ordinance that lists specific exceptions that will not require application of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those exceptions to that separation requirement would be allowed by right, and so without proceeding to the Board of Zoning Appeals before final design review, the applicants could go straight from initial design review to final design review the next month. In addition, in the same vein, there are base of building landscaping requirements, both in the GDO and outside the GDO, and base of building landscaping requirements, there are some exceptions already built in to the zoning ordinance, but what we've done is we've tried to fine-tune those exceptions, make it more user-friendly, make it easier to know that there are these exceptions, such as areas where there are drive-throughs, where there are entrance doors, where there are vehicular access doors, so that both staff and users, or staff and developers and the planning commission know exactly what's permitted and what's not permitted. So we think these changes make our regulations more user-friendly and eliminate the hurdle of possibly having to go and get a variance to these requirements. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions, as would Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Ives. We've all worked together, along with Mr. Lewis and Mr. Ornellus, in crafting this amendment. We do need to conduct a public hearing on this matter before formulating a recommendation for the city council.
Okay. Chairman, I'd like to add that we hope this is one of many changes you'll see coming in the near future as staff looks to try to streamline the development process, and like I said, this is just the first step. You will see, I hope, as we work through the zoning ordinance, many other ways to try to expedite and cut off any time delays that we can on future projects.
Very good and very much needed. Appreciate you looking into that. Any other questions for the staff? Now that I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
I did want to just mention for the record, I neglected to a moment ago, that we did receive a letter from Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC, who submitted a letter in lieu of attending the public hearing tonight, so I wanted to get that on the record.
Okay. Thanks, sir. If there's no more questions, we're ready for a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Staff reports to another business. Mr. Whitaker?
I have none. Mr. Blomley, do you have anything?
I have none.
Mr. Huddleston, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Ives? Mr. Lewis?
You could have an hour credit.